A I S D Board of Trustees on September 19th at 7:11 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We'll start our meeting with opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Jones in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(LAUGHING). 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 (LAUGHING).
Thank you, please be seated. Please silence all cell phones, electronic devices to avoid all disruptions. And now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Want to say hello to all of our students that are in the audience, especially Mr. Ryan Laney. Good evening, sir.[115.22][115.22](LAUGHING). This is his very first board meeting to ever attend. He said he wants to be a board member when he grows up.[123.00][123.00](LAUGHING). We've talked him out of it already. So, at this time, we will move on to administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. I'd like to recommend the board appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for the position of Assistant Principal at Bailey Junior High School and Assistant Principal at Carter Junior High School.
It's time to hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Raish and a second by Mr. Hibs. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven trustees present, seven trustees voting affirmative. Dr. Cavassos, please introduce our new appointments.
Thank you, President Hogg, and it's my pleasure to present the new Assistant Principal for Bailey Junior High School, Mr. Jason Fitzgerald.[169.48][169.48](APPLAUSE). Jason attended the University of Texas at Arlington, obtained his Bachelor of Arts in History, UT Arlington for his Master of Education in Ed Leadership, and he has most recently been a social studies teacher at Arlington High School since 2010. Jason, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you, President Hogg, all the members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. I'd like to thank Bailey Junior High and all of those that attended today.[202.37][202.37](LAUGHING). I'd like to thank Tiffany Benavides for giving me the opportunity to be at Bailey. Excuse me. Next, I'd like to thank Jennifer Young for giving me the opportunity at Arlington High and for all of her support and encouragement. Next, I'd like to thank Shaver Dalla and Jason Davis for being great mentors and great friends. I'd like to be able to thank Peggy Martin at Arlington High for not only being a great boss and believing in me, but being an amazing friend as well. And I would like to be able to thank, lastly, my beautiful wife, Jenny, for just being her. I'm exceedingly humbled and excited for this position. Thank you.[241.48][241.48](APPLAUSE).
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Carter Junior High School, Kaylee McMullin.[251.81][251.81](APPLAUSE). Kaylee attended the University of Texas at Arlington, received her Bachelor of Arts in English and UT Arlington for her Master of Education in Ed Leadership, most recently an English teacher-coach at Arlington High School, and has also worked with the city of Arlington as a program coordinator for the Parks and Recreation Department. Kaylee, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you. President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity. I would like to thank Ms. Rachel Brown at Carter and her administrative staff for giving me this opportunity. Thank Ms. Jennifer Young and Shaver Dalla and Jason Davis for being such great mentors and supports to me over the years. And I thank my parents for being here tonight, and I would also like to thank my husband for all of his support. He is a football coach and is in Louisville tonight and could not make it.[305.12][305.12](LAUGHING). But thank you for this opportunity. I'm so excited to serve the community and Carter Junior High students and their families.[313.58][313.58](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations to you both. Start emailing to figure out how to do it right, exactly right.[325.27][325.27](LAUGHING). As is our custom, we'll ask the appointees, please follow Mr. Hill out to the lobby so we can welcome you in a reception. Please let the trustees go first. We will take a brief break. We'll call this meeting back to order at 7:25 PM. First up tonight is a work session. The first up tonight is a discussion item, Item A, 2012 through 15 Achieved Today Excel to Mars Strategic Year One Report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and this is the Year One Annual Report that our consultant, Elaine Seay, has put together. So at this time, Elaine, would you come forward and present that? And it has been one year. And so we have the annual report for one year of our strategic plan, Year One. And Elaine, just before you even begin, I'd like to thank you for your work and thank Dr. Carter for his work in the data analysis and data sharing and things like that. So Elaine?
Okay, thank you. President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, it's my pleasure to be here to report on the 28 measures that you, as a board, determined would be important to look at as evidence of the work, results of the strategic plan. Just, I love this slide, so I pretty much have this every time. But we're at that last point where we're looking at the measures to determine what kind of progress has been made. So, you know, typically, we've been on this periodic review for the three previous sessions. So here, we're finishing up Year One. We're going to look at the 28 measures. The measures have been defined by you as the board, and the data collection plan was developed, and district staff actually collected data. And then the data was sent to me, and we looked at it, analyzed it, summarized it, prepared a written report that I know you've received. What we're going to do here is, just looking at the format of the written report, we're reporting in that document on 25 of the 28 measures. Three measures could not be reported on because either they weren't supposed to be reported now, like there was to be some work on the instructional model, but that's not in place, and we couldn't measure that. So we have measures, we have date on 25 of the measures. And the format of that report, you know, the point of that was for it to be very clear and precise and transparent, easy to read and understand, and I hope that came through in the report. But what we wanted to do in that report is summarize the data and then say what this data says to us in terms of a finding. And then at the end of the document was a summary of the strengths and areas for improvement. Tonight, what I'm going to do is go through each of the measures, and we'll just start and go one through, well, there'll be 25 of them, and we kept the original numbering, so we'll actually end up on number 28. You know, there were, there are measures, these 25 measures we're going to talk about tonight cover the continuum of data that we had planned to collect, and it includes the academic outcomes, outcomes in terms of opinions on lots of different areas that are touched by the five-year plan. And all of, so all the components of the five-year plan should be reflected in these measures. First one being the STAR performance, and let me just say, before we jump right in here too far, is that you probably have seen almost all of this data before in reports, either to you in some written or otherwise reported format. This is not supposed to be the first time you see the data, but this is supposed to be a sort of a synthesis of the data so that you can look across these measures to see where the district is. So in terms of the STAR performance, you've seen that data. In terms of MET standard, what we're displaying here is the Arlington results by subject aggregated across the grade levels, and then we have the results for the state as a whole, so comparing the district to the state. And you see that in most of that performance, that the district is just slightly lower than the state in terms of outcomes. We're also looking at the performance on, of students that are economically disadvantaged in the district compared to students statewide who are economically disadvantaged. So we're looking, pulling out a population to look at. And in that analysis, you see that the difference between the performance of Arlington economically disadvantaged students and statewide are not quite as big as the gap. So they're actually performing closer to the statewide averages for that group. But for both groups, the largest discrepancy that we see across subject areas is in mathematics. And so that is, otherwise, most of them are one to two points different, so pretty much right on, except in mathematics. And although I did, let me just stop here and say, in this presentation, you won't see all of the data that's in the report. You won't see every table, every graph, chart. I just wanted to sort of hit the highlights. But in terms of the STAR performance, I looked at the MET standard in this presentation, but the report has the data for the advanced level also. Next measure is the reading performance and math performance of students in K and 1. And these assessments are measured by the DRA, EDL, the DMA, the instruments the district uses. The state requires assessments of reading and math at these grade levels. And what we see in the state in reading, that the first graders, in terms of the performance of meeting the grade level standard, only 61% of those students meet the grade level standard compared to 87% of the kindergarten students. So there, for whatever reason, is some fairly large discrepancy in performance in reading between those two grade levels. In mathematics, the performance of kindergarteners and first graders are very similar. So that reading at first grade looks to be sort of an outlier. The next measure looks at the Grade Two reading performance and math performance. And the way we measure this is, these test results are based on the Iowa Test of, Iowa Assessments, Iowa Test of Basic Skills, which is a nationally-normed achievement test. And the standard that we use to say that they performed at grade level or higher is scoring at a percentile rank that corresponds to the fifth stay nine or higher. Think about the bell-shaped curve with the fifth stay nine's right in the middle, and then one, two, three, four on this side, and six, seven, eight, nine on this side. So any student who scored at the fifth stay nine and are higher in reading and/or math is reflected here. So what we see is that in Arlington, second graders, 58% of those students scored at the fifth stay nine or higher. Now, if you look at that distribution for the nation, 60% of kids score from the fifth stay nine. So the performance is very similar to the nation in terms of the reading performance of second graders, which I think is, I think it's a very good indicator of performance because it's a nationally-normed test, so you're not looking at just a state assessment where you're just looking at a set of skills the states identify, but you're looking at a set of skills that are identified as important in reading nationwide. Then if you look at the math performance, you see that the math performance is stronger for students at Grade Two than it is for the nation. And when you look back at, remember, we looked at the STAR performance on the very first slide, and the biggest discrepancy was in math. And for those years before STAR, when we were looking at tax and teams and all the other state assessments, what you would see in the data is that math performance always looked weaker than reading performance or English performance. But what you have to remember is, and Ros will remember me saying this many, many times to board members, is that these tests that are at the state level, they're not set at the same level of difficulty. So the people setting the standard for reading are over here, and the people setting the standard for math are over here, and they didn't in the past do a very good job of making sure those tests were of equal difficulty. On a national norm test, they do a much better job of making these tests equally difficult, plus you're measuring the performance against, you know, the norm group. So what this says to us is that at Grade Two in Arlington, the math performance is stronger than reading performance and stronger than the nation.
Ms. Seay, wait just a second. Let's take some questions kind of during the process. I think it's okay because there are a lot to, lots to cover. I know Dr. Raish had one.
Okay.
Thank you. Elaine, I was just wondering, the comparison, the national comparison cohort or group is, is it only public school children? Is it all children that take the ITBS test? Or do you know the detail there?
The way they select the national norm group is they try to get us, and generally speaking, it is going to be public school kids. They have norms for, they have private school norms, and they have the regular norms that include mostly public schools, and they have, I mean, they have some special norm sets. But what they do when they, when they select that group to take the test, to create that norm, they try to make it representative of students nationwide. So they're going to try to make sure they're represented in terms of ethnicity, the economic class of parts of the country, you know, all of those variables that they would be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Elaine, I have a real quick question. Do we look at the trending of what we've done in the past? I know pretty much we're developing a lot of baselines for everything we're developing here, but is there anything we can see from our past to see trending of what we've done? Because it could be great that we're above the national norm, and I think that's good, but I don't know if four points above is good, or should it be 15 points above?
Yeah. And I think you hit upon a good point. What we're doing is we're looking at this baseline data, what this data looks like, but there's, we haven't set a standard for what we want it to look like at this point. So I think for this first year of data, you have to just accept that. You can't make as many judgments as you'll be able to make later when you have time to see how this data trends over time. And, you know, in terms of ITBS, I don't know how long the district's been giving ITBS, so there may have been historical data that we could look at and maybe go back and look at, but...
It's the first year. Dr. Ross just said the first year, so we don't have any trending data on that.
There's other, there's other pieces while I was glancing, while I was looking through this. I do think some trends, and I know you guys are probably looking at, and for the Year One Report, I understand this is baseline, but anytime we can look at trends, I think it's always, we got to, we all talk a lot. We got to make sure we're making progress.
Right. Well, and so when we look at this data next year at this time, then you're going to see two years' worth of data.
Right.
And two years' worth of comparisons with whatever comparison group we're using.
Perfect, thank you. Continue on, Ms. Seay.
All righty. Measure four looks at rigorous course participation and success. And here, this particular graph just focuses on the participation piece. What we did is, the curriculum office defined what rigorous course participation looks like, and they would include pre-AP courses, AP courses, any kind of advanced or more rigorous course. And they looked at it not only in the four core areas, but also in other areas. For example, in music, there are AP courses, and in foreign languages, there are AP courses and so forth. So this is looking at the percent of kids in Grade Seven through 12 that are enrolled in at least one rigorous course in their grade level. So you, I mean, in these particular subject areas at the beginning of the year. Actually, no, this is, this is not, this is the wrong slide. This is the success rate, not the participation rate. 47% of the kids participated in one or more courses. The success rate here looks at, I'm sorry, I'm talking in the wrong direction. This looks at the participation rate, I mean, it looks at the success rate of kids who started at the beginning of the semester and who finished the course. So what this tells you is that in math, you had kids that maybe started out in a pre-AP or an AP course, but only 83% were successful, either passed the course or completed that course. They may have dropped down to a grade level class rather than have failed the class. Some of them may have failed, but it's a lot more likely, or a good possibility, that those students were not successful in that class and then dropped down to a lower level in the class, to a grade level.
Thank you. On these rigorous courses, are there any career tech courses that are considered, that are, because I think we have a lot of rigorous career tech courses that are included in these numbers? Like the Fire Academy Kids or certificate programs?
Evan, do you know if in the other courses, that there were CTE courses in there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Probably what we need to do is to maybe provide a little bit better definition than what's in this all other courses. But generally speaking, you know, when we report data to the state, we have to indicate the students that are in a rigorous course, and they define it well, but it's generally, the others are generally music, they're fine arts, other fine arts, and foreign languages, and they could be career tech if they are considered to be an advanced course. Okay.
So just to be clear, the, the success graph that we're looking at is, it includes not only ones that did not pass the course, but ones that dropped the course.
Exactly.
And I suppose we could look at the data for those that just passed or not passed, and I guess I'm putting this out there, I don't know what is the better way to look at this, because I would forecast that the next step then is to assess how much participation is good versus bad. 91% ELA, does that mean those other 9% shouldn't have been in there? Do we need to screen differently? Those, you know, those kind of conversations. And I know, Dr. Cavassos, if you could give us a little bit of understanding what, how, a little clarity on what, how that next step is defined and executed.
I think an important point to make is what Elaine said earlier, you touched upon it a little bit, that there are, there's a lot of other variables and things that are well in this data set. And so I know, Wally, when you put some of this together, it contains a lot of information. But I would say that, that looking at, and we made this very purposeful, I think, Wally at the time, was to look at how many kids were actually enrolled and then how many kids actually finished. And so to us, those are two different things, is when you, how many kids actually had an interest, and then why did they drop? That's one. And then the success of those kids who stayed in, basically. And those two numbers are very different, and you'll see here in AP and as we go through that there's a big difference there. To me, the next steps would be the participation and then the success. And we have to, I think, keep focusing, overarching, are kids participating and are they being successful?
And I guess just a follow-up to this and the previous slide with the, the next phases of the strategy of determining the, the percent of what would be an acceptable target for improvement or not. Can you explain what, how that's going to come about?
Absolutely. Two things. One, you'll see tonight, and we won't get into that right now, but the CIP and DIP percentage of improvement, if you will, or target. For each of these measures, at some point, we want to set some targets. But I think we also have to be very mindful, and we've had a lot of conversation, philosophy conversation, all of us here, but about the high-yield ones and setting targets on the high-yield measures so that it cascades to the campuses and we actually have something to leverage. We could set targets on 28 different, in this case, I guess 25, different measures. But as you know, sometimes that's, that's just covering up a huge amount of territory and really not capturing the high yield. They don't all have the equal weight, I guess, is what I want to say is. So I think as, as a team, setting targets is our next step, but also defining those high-yield measures to set targets for. And I'll give you one, I mean, it's going to come up, but it's the On Track to Graduation. To me, that's a high yield, and we've had a lot of conversation, that's a high-yield system-wide type measure that I think will benefit us from setting a target and concentrating on it versus setting 25 targets and trying to hit every single one with the same degree of emphasis, because they don't all have the equal weight, if that makes sense. So there are some big ones that, AP is another one, that I think we would benefit from setting a measurable target for and then letting that cascade down to the organization.
Is there a, a scientific process, if you will, to determine what those target percentages are? Or is that just a very heated subjective discussion that you all have going, well, it actually should be this versus this?
It's an art and a science, I think, would be the way I would describe it, because you want to set reasonable targets, but you also, I mean, you want to set tight targets, but you want to set reasonable targets.
Right.
And in the context of what we're trying to accomplish and the initiatives, and Wally has a whole discussion on this when we get to CIPs and DIPs, but in the context of what we're trying to accomplish and things we're putting in motion, those have to be realistic, and I think we have to have some stretch targets as well. But then there has to be agreement among the team about where the standard should be. But at the end of the day, it has to be clear, you know, I think the targets that we set so that we can then focus in on that as a district.
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, having comparative data, whether it be state data or national data, helps you whenever you're looking at what a valid, reasonable, but, you know, stringent target might be. So those can be helpful.
One more question, Ms. Seay. Mr. Pompa. Actually, I was just going to follow up on what Dr. Cavassos was saying in terms of, you know, setting those, those goals realistic and everything. And some of these, what I recognize is that we may be interested in looking at, and I was talking to Elaine about this before, figuring out what drives that performance, those, those metrics, and maybe even setting goals at that level. What behavior, what activity can we control? And this is just going kind of back to when, when I used to play sports and my basketball coach, my football coach saying, look, if you, if you do this, and this, and this, and this, the wins and losses are going to take care of themselves. And so basically, kind of deconstructing some of these goals and addressing the behavior that we have control of that will, you know, lead to, lead to the success of those goals. And then as far as the, you know, setting the bar, you know, we may just have to look at, as a board and saying, okay, where do we want to be five years from now? And then just kind of step back and say, well, if that's the case, then in Year One, we want to do this, Year Two, we want to do that. And approaching it that way, I think is, it's a good way, better than just saying, well, let's just do 2% the first years. What's realistic five years from now? And then breaking those down year by year.
And Mr. Pompa, I'd add that in some of these, it becomes, I think, very apparent what some of those behaviors, if you will, you described those behaviors, but just looking at some of these literacy at the early grade levels is critical, and that could be a game changer for a lot of the statistics as we move forward with On Track to Graduation, as you can see, our rates and things like that. That's, that's the level of, I think, goal setting and target setting that would be helpful for the district.
Continue on, Ms. Seay.
Next measure is college readiness. And here, we're looking at AP performance in this particular slide. And what we're showing is the percent of students that, first of all, a couple of lines, 49% of all tested students earned a three or higher. Remember, APs are one, two, three, four, five scores. 16.7% of our graduating seniors own, earned a three or higher while they were in high school. So that's a, 17% of the kids in the graduating class have earned a college credit. credit type situation while they were in high school. But when you look at the graph, what that shows is the percent of scores that's, that when you aggregate all the scores of all the students taking the exams, that forty-two percent of the scores in Arlington were forty, were three or higher. In Texas, and this is not data from this current year, but this is the prior year, in Texas, that was forty-eight percent in 2012, and in the nation, it was fifty-nine percent. Now, there's a lot of variables in this data. Everybody who takes an AP course does not necessarily take an AP exam, and how that happens is also, is in a mix of variables. So what we know is of students who were taking AP exams, that less than half of those earned a score of three or higher, which generally will earn your college credit, and that this performance appears to be lower than Texas in the nation. Okay. PSAT performance is also in this, within the same measure, and in Arlington students, all our tenth graders are required to take the PSAT, and those scores range from twenty to eighty, and you see that in the scores in these three major areas of critical reading, math, and writing, the scores are really very similar across the subject areas and are very similar to the nation. To me, this data is, speaks well to students' preparation for, especially since kids taking the PSAT at tenth grade may not all be required to take it. So District A may only have their top kids who take the PSAT, whereas this district may have all the kids and so forth. So you're not always sure you're comparing apples and oranges, because the situations may differ. This is the data that Dr. Kavasos referred to. This is the percentage of high school students who, by a district-defined set of criteria, are on track for a four-year graduation. And the criteria that the district used to arrive at this figure includes those students who enrolled a hundred and fifty days or more, who passed all of their core courses, who, and passed all their state assessments, and who had the credits to move to the next grade, and who had attendance rates of ninety percent or higher. So it's not just one factor that's included here, multiple factors. So every time you include another factor, you know, kids are going to be dropping out of that group of ones who can meet all the criteria. And so at this point, for the students who enrolled in the twelve, thirteen school year in high school only, or about half of them are on track to graduate in four years.
Mr. Pampa.
Okay, you know, these numbers, you have to, you have to have some type of contrast, I think, for them to really be, feel a little bit more meaningful. So next year, obviously, we'll have some contrast. And this may be a question for Wally more than anything else.
Spencer was trying to tell me to turn on my mic. First of all, I wonder if we can break them down by grade, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, so we can see, hopefully, our twelfth graders are on-track-to-graduate, more than fifty percent, I would expect that they are.
Yes.
So even though maybe earlier on, when they get to us ninth grade and tenth grade, they may not be, they may be struggling, we catch them up, in essence. So it may be a good, good, good way to look at it internally, but externally, and I know this is something that we created, but I wonder if a few other districts, at least, since we're not going to have state data for this, obviously, this is one of those standards that we're creating for ourselves, so that we have more than just the STAR test to measure ourselves by, and this is a great standard, I think, I think this is a, one of those transcendent standards that you'll always be able to look at year after year after year, regardless of what the standard metrics are that are driven by politicians in Austin, you can look at this every year and know, and compare yourselves. So, but I wonder if we could maybe, Wally, talk a few other districts that we generally compare ourselves with and pull this data from them so we can compare their on-track-to-graduation rate?
Yes. No, actually, Tony, that's a, that's a very, very good point with some of the bigger districts, that, that we could share the framework for this and see if they would be willing to, to use it.
Yeah.
So we can have some comparison. The other thing on that, which you've highlighted, I think, Wally, you can, you've broken down this by grade level, and down to the elementary, down to first grade, second grade, third grade, and their level of on-track-to-graduation. So this is one that cascades all the way through the organization, and you'll hear here in the next presentation on CIPs and DIPs, about how that's one of our leading indicators. And so there's a lot there, first grade DRA results and math and all that, that, that is going to be part of our goal setting for the campuses.
Well, I'd like to make a request, if it's not too much trouble, to get the breakdown by grade. Yeah, just an email or something that he can send us.
Probably, you want the K through twelve or the nine through twelve?
I'm looking really at the high school, because that's the critical, obviously, that's, that's the last four years, so. I'm sure eventually we'll get to see all of it, but we can at least see the, the high I'm pretty sure we graduated more than forty-nine percent of our kids, so I want to make sure we're seeing that.
We are, Mr. Pampa.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Salmons.
Thank you, just a quick question and a comment also. Dr. Kavasos, earlier you talked about this particular measure being a high-yield measure, and certainly, we discussed that, and I agree wholeheartedly, when we look at the twenty-eight measures, there are some measures that just leap right out at you, and this is one, and I think that it goes through the entire system, as we talked about earlier. So if we look at measures to pull forward, to be the focus, as we discussed that earlier, I certainly agree with you on that. We talk a lot about forty-nine percent, fifty-one percent, sometimes I'm very interested in knowing, how many students are we talking about? What's the sample size here?
This is all of Arlington's high school students.
All, all high school students, so how many? You know, what?
Twenty.
Seventeen thousand.
I don't need to write this moment, I'm just, just interested in how, how many?
Twelve to fifteen thousand.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogue. I like this one, too. If a student goes off-track, are they off-track forever, or do they have the capability at some point to, through remediation, retest, finally pass STAR, get back on track?
Exactly.
Does that happen at the end of each year?
Well, in terms of credit requirements, that, of course, could happen in summer school. At the high school, the, the tests that are required for graduation have retest opportunities. So yes, students would have opportunities to get back on track. The, the credit requirements pretty much are going to be met, I mean, if, if you're passing your courses, being successful, getting back on track for, that means making up credits that you lost. The attendance rate issue, and I don't know from the data how much impact the attendance had, in other words, how many students with attendance rates lower than ninety percent actually met all these other requirements. I would doubt that it would be very high. So yes, they do have opportunities to get back on track, and, and that's what the remediation efforts at secondary are all about, getting them back on track.
I would see Mr. Pampa's request as definitely showing an upward trend.
That's right.
And if it doesn't, we're in trouble. Yeah, so something's happening later on in life. I just want to say one thing about the AP. I will agree that a lot of our students who are in AP courses do not take the exam for whatever reasons. Perhaps they're only in the AP course to get the GPA points. And that's a shame. We, I would love to make them all take the test, but I think our numbers would plummet then.
It's likely, and it's, it's sort of like the PSAT analogy. In AP performance, if you look at it statewide, nationwide, different districts are going to have different requirements. Some are going to require everybody who's in an AP course to take the test, some are not going to require that.
Right. Thank you.
Four-year graduation rate, so this comes right after the ones that are on track for graduation. But this looks at the class of 2012, and this data just was received by the district as part of the accountability reports that came in recently. And you see here, there's a lag in performance of the district compared to the state. So eighty-four percent of the class of twelve, who started ninth grade four years earlier, graduated on time. So that fifty-one percent was a point in time for all kids, but for a cohort going through, our actual graduation rate was eighty-four percent for the class of 2012. Did not reach the, the same level as the statewide rate. Next measure is meeting the college-ready standard on the Algebra II and a Course Test. And you know, of course, that whole picture of the End of Course Tests has changed, but when we selected this test, this is, Algebra II is a course that the state's identified as a, a good predictor of students being college-ready. And the state hasn't actually defined, clearly defined, what the college-ready standard is, but they still have the passing rates and the kids who met the advanced level rates. And remember, these passing rates are being phased in, so these are the passing rates for this year, but next year, they'll be more rigorous. But who knows if anybody will take this Algebra II test in the future, because it'll be, you know, a decision to be made. But what we see here is, in terms of the percent passing, our, both our all students and our economically disadvantaged students are scoring, you know, slightly better than the state. When you look at the advanced-level performance, which is, you know, more rigorous level, that both groups lag behind the state, but economically disadvantaged students are closer to their counterparts than the group as a whole of all students taking Algebra II. And then this next measure, which is also one that's going to be changing, because we're going to have new graduation requirements, but this looks at the, this measure looks at the percentage of students in the district that met the requirements for a recommended or distinguished achievement program. And you see, this is the, almost the same pattern that we saw in the graduation rates, that the students in terms of meeting these higher standards for recommended or distinguished achievement are lower than the state fairly consistently. And this is just looking at the whole class. So you have three classes, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and we don't have the state data for thirteen yet, but the data's not changing, you know, dramatically here. It bumped up for the class of thirteen, but like I said, we don't have a comparison for the state yet. Our next measure is career in technology, enrollment and certifications that students earned. And we looked at what percent of the high school students are enrolled in one or more CTE classes this school year, and about half of the kids are enrolled, fifty-one percent are enrolled. And of all of those students that were enrolled, six-hundred-and-twenty-three earned certifications, and that represents seven point three percent of students enrolled. So this, again, we don't have comparison data, we don't have state data to compare, we just, you know, and we know that more and more programs that award certifications are being, you know, brought into the district, so we should see some changes in these trends over time. Questions there? Okay. Post-secondary success. We're looking at whether or not students that are graduating feel like they are prepared. And what this data represents is information from a survey of graduating seniors, and they were responding to a question about whether or not they felt like they were ready for, prepared for the next steps after graduation. Over three-quarters of them said yes, that they could express themselves in writing, and almost, you know, two, a little over two-thirds said yes, and that they could work with others, and almost, you know, eight out of ten said yes. So this is data that we don't have, you know, a prior year to compare, this survey was different than some of the data that's been collected in the past. But we also, on the survey, students were also asked, had they done specific things? Had they taken an AP course? Had they taken a CTE class? Have they obtained a technical certificate? Or they met with a military recruiter? So these are other, and I just wanted to, you know, kind of not throw these out here, but present these to see, because this is, of course, a student self-report data, so I think this data has to be looked at in terms of the other data, the other kinds of data that we're collecting, you know, in these same areas, in terms of AP course, you know, rigorous course-taking, kids taking CTE courses. A lot of times, you know, like on the CTE, we know that half of the kids took a CTE course in their high school this, this past year, but only thirty-four percent said they taken one, but they might not realize that this course is really in that domain of CTE courses. So just remember, this data is, you know, reflects a self-report information.
Thank you. Can we go back one slide, please?
Sure.
The seven point three percent. Do all CTHE courses provide a certification?
No, they don't. They don't.
So that really is apples and oranges up there then?
Right.
Okay.
But, but we, we do know that, you know, seven percent of kids that were enrolled in a course, were enrolled in a course that they earned certification. Now, the fact that all courses aren't certification-granting courses is, yeah, that's another layer that's not in here, and that really should be the divisor as opposed to all students.
Yeah.
But that's not the way we had the data reported this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to measure eleven again. So what, what this slide represents is that out of the respondents in the top graph, the percentages of who took CTE classes, APIB, are, of, of that population, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So can we perform any separations or analytics to extrapolate the top graph data for students that didn't do those things, to see if there's a correlation there with the, the lower self-expression?
Sure, yeah.
Just to, you know?
Right, because you got data on each of these variables, so you could do all, you know, any number of analyses to see if the kids who said they're not prepared for the next steps were those kids who took any AP courses, who earned any certifications, who were in a, enrolled in a CTE class, yes. You could do that kind of analysis to drill down and see, are those kids who weren't saying they're prepared?
Just see if we can make any kind of correlation.
Yeah.
And I, I assume that's something that, that you guys are going to be looking at, it just, this data, as always, we have so much data, and it's a matter of how we use this data, and, I mean, there, there's so many analytics that could be drawn from this to try to help us establish what our targets need to be, what the correlations are for success, and, I mean, it's, I assume it's there, I just didn't know if we, we know how to get at it and that type of thing.
And I think, I think Studer did this survey, or Gibson's?
Gibson.
Gibson, and they would have the data set, you know, so that kind of analysis could be performed.
And just, I'll just add that, again, that it reinforces that task of finding those high-yield targets. high-yield targets and behaviors, as Tony described them, that, that moves the needle significantly.
And like, this, this is a self-report measure, like I said. So we're going to look at some other measures that say what kids really do, so. So this is the, what happened, where they went after high school graduation. The college enrollment data comes to the district through the National Student Clearing House. And this clearing house gets data from, on students, on ninety-eight percent of, of all of college enrollees. So basically, they get data from everywhere. So this is just, to me, this is just a wonderful way for the district to be able to track the progress of its graduates. And before, a couple of years ago, you really couldn't do that well because nobody was collecting all of this data. But what this tells us is, and what happened, the way we give this data, is we give them our, the names and information, demographic information on our students in Arlington, who graduated in the class of oh-six, oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine, ten through current class. And then they follow those kids and report back to us the percent who enrolled in a college in the fall after graduation. So we'll get the class of thirteen data, you know, sometime, you know, this semester. It, it would be available. And we know then that, this is a pretty consistent data from year to year. To me, it's surprisingly consistent, but also that the trend is, you know, it's trending slightly upward. And as I mentioned to Mr. Pampa before the board meeting started, you know, I also do some work with another school district that collects the same kind of data. And Arlington's data is much more positive than the other district. And so I thought that was a, you know, a, a big plus in terms of, of seeing that kids are enrolling and, and getting into some post-secondary programs after high school. The second part of the graph shows which type of college they enroll in. And this data is also pretty consistent. So the way you interpret this is, for the class of 2012, sixty-five percent of the graduating class enrolled. Thirty-one percent of the entire graduating class enrolled in a two-year college, and thirty-four percent enrolled in a four-year college. So it's about half and half. Of the kids who go, about half enroll in two-year, half in four-year. And the fact that you have a strong two-year program right in the area, I'm sure accounts for this kind of equal, you know, path that kids are going in terms of two-year and four-year.
Can I say something real quick? I think, you know, this is a good opportunity to give a shout-out to our partners, TCC and UTA, because I think that also helps. And, I mean, they're working really hard to remove the barriers for our students to going to either one of those schools. And I think between the programs that we have in place of dual credit and, and all that, and them being very proactive in working with us, and then some of the things that we have in place, I think, coming up, are going to just drive those numbers even further up. So I mean, I, I think that's, that's great. So I'm grateful for that partnership with them.
Even though it's not reflected here, one, a piece of information that's in the National Student Clearing House data, they give us data, give you back a data file that shows you the info for your graduates. So we get actual info on individual students. But it also shows you where they go. So you talked about UTA and TCC. Well, you can look for each of these graduating classes and find, they do a couple of different reports. You can look for a specific class, but they also will combine across all of your graduating classes and show you the top fifteen or the top twenty-five places where your kids go. And that's very informative. Because if you know where they're going, it gives you another opportunity to work with the people that they're encountering next to help kids be successful to get out of college. And then, this is the next step. This data's also from the clearing house, and it shows you for the class of 2006 in Arlington, that thirty, almost thirty-five percent of the kids earned either an associate's, bachelor's, or higher degree within six years of graduating from high school. Because, you know, nobody gets a four-year degree in four years anymore.
That's true.
Not against the rules. And, but that same data for the United States across the whole nation is fifty-four percent. So not quite as strong as the nation as a whole. And then for the class of 2007, that data bumps up a bit, thirty-five and a half percent. So each year, you'll, we'll be able to add on the classes as they go. So we'll get the 2008 class, and nine, and so forth. So we'll be able to see down the road whether or not kids are successfully completing a degree. The other piece that would be helpful to know is if they're completing other kinds of post-secondary certifications, technical certifications. And I think that's an area that still needs to be investigated, to try to figure out how we can collect that information.
Can I ask, does this include two- and four-year institutions?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And just a clarification, these are the most current, yeah, I guess, because they're looking at six years.
Right.
If we looked at four years, I guess we could be, get earlier data or more.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I'm looking at, okay, it's going to be, you know, before we can see the effects of what we're doing.
Yeah.
It's going to be twenty-eight, class of 2018.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, yeah, class of 2018. So it'd be 2019 when we can see when, how we're doing on that, on that metric.
But, but that assumes that you're, that you, that you're not doing anything to support those kids after they leave you.
Uh-huh.
Which, this strategic plan now doesn't really have that particular focus, but...
Yeah, we haven't. That's not, okay.
But the good thing is, on these clearing house reports, they show you for, for example, for the class of 2010, they'll show you data on that class every year, so you can see, you know, how many got their associate's degree by this year, and how many got, you know, how, how, how many left school? How many came in again for the first time? This is just great data to be able to analyze and look at what are happening to the graduates. And the next measure looks at the remediation. And this is from the Texas Success Initiative Report through the Higher Ed Coordinating Board. And this compares from the class of 2009 graduates to the class of 2012, compares Arlington and Texas' performance. And what we're reporting here is the percent of kids who need remediation when they get to college. And if you'll notice, that, of course, the lower number's the best number, and Arlington is doing a much better job of getting kids into college that, with fewer of them needing remediation than the statewide average as a whole.
This would be one of those areas, it would be interesting to see the, the comparison to what are considered high-performing districts in the state as well, to see how far below, hopefully, they are from the state.
And I think you can go in, and Wally could tell us for sure, I think you could go in and look at other districts. I don't think it's just your data that you can find. Can you just find your own?
So we can't do that then?
Yeah, well, you could ask people to, you know, get that data, so.
Okay.
Now, we're going into some measures that are a little softer, not as much hard data. And here, we're looking at participation of students in co- and extracurricular activities. And what this data shows is that across grades seven through twelve, two-thirds of the kids, sixty-six percent, are involved in co- or extracurricular activities. And the way this was defined is by the type of course they're in, and whether that course and the enrollment in that course requires co- or extracurricular participation. And then we have a measure of lifelong, lifelong learning skills. And, you know, we talked about this a year ago, about how this is difficult to measure. But I think that this approach is a good one, at least, you know, as a beginning measure, because it asks students, the graduating class, which of these behaviors were encouraged by their school? And I, I was amazed by this data, because I, you know, kids, they don't have any incentive to say yes if, you know, beyond that it did. So, but, but again, it's self-report data. But if you look at them in terms of these particular behaviors, you know, the majority of kids are agreeing that these behaviors were encouraged by their high school.
I have a question. On the, the previous slide? Will we look at, besides the, the courses that students are enrolled in that have an extracurricular tag, will, will we be able to capture other things as far as key clubs, robotics clubs, those types of things? And will that be confused with this data set? Is there a way to get good data if we did that?
Yeah. There is a plan to capture that very data you're talking about, to get the actual enrollment and school activities directly from the schools. So it'll be a process of taking data from sponsors of activities that aren't reflected in coursework, and then you could then combine the coursework piece. For example, you don't have to have every football coach tell you the names of kids who run football, because you can pull that out of the student database.
Right.
So, but all that data then can be merged to provide you an index of, or an indicator of what proportion of your kids are involved, and what kinds of activities they're involved in. Are they, you know, hobby-type clubs? Are they leadership? Are they, you know, whatever type activities? Because I think that will add a lot of quality to the data and be able to use that then for other decisions.
So is, is that up for this next year going forward?
Yes, for this current year.
Is that right, Dr. Carter?
Yeah, I would just add, and Wally has a lot to say about this one, but that, you know, it's, it, we've, we've talked about this in terms of how you define it and how you report it, especially in the elementary levels and self-reporting and things like that. It becomes a lot trickier than, than we've anticipated, I think, because of how you define extracurricular and co-curricular activities. Wally, you want to say anything else? I think you do. Come on, come on down.
I don't think he does.
He's told me, so I guess we should...
The trouble is, I'm, I'm breaking the news to, to Chad. The, we need a system. We need a data entry system so that there can be that consistency.
Yeah.
And it's, it's called, all different kind of activities, there's a certain code, and enrollment in that, and by all it just, and it then goes into teams, or whatever system that we have to, to get, capture that data. Then we have consistency.
Yeah.
And even then, we'll still have this. These are still defined for next year, and we'll still see that. But then on top of that, getting the, the other data.
Okay. All right.
I, I texted him to make sure that you heard this.
When I was looking at the differences between the junior high and the high school, I do know that when my daughter was in junior high, she was in activities that, when she got to high school, because of the graduation plan, she could no longer be involved in those extracurricular activities. So our data doesn't reflect that that's why there may be a large gap of percentage between junior high and high school.
Mm-hmm.
And so how could we correlate that? It may not be that the desire was not there. It's just that the time ability, you have to give up something.
Right.
You know?
But when we are able to pull in other data, like Wally was just talking about, you know, they may not have time to be in an activity that requires a lot of time away from school or at school, but away from academic endeavors. But they might be in the honor society, and they might be in some other kinds of activities that don't require quite as much, a higher level of participation. So what might, what you might see are different kinds of activities of kids at different grade levels.
Well, for instance, my daughter did orchestra and choir, but when she got to high school, she couldn't do both.
Right.
It was a conflict in scheduling.
Yeah.
Wasn't a desire, wasn't there. We still have her violin, but she can't, she can't play it now. I mean, she can, but not as well as she could have had she stayed in there. So that's what I'm trying to, this data doesn't show that, that education or...
We don't know the why.
Right. The high school path may have been the influence, whatever. I would hate it to look like something happens when they get to high school that they don't want it anymore. The scheduling, something in the scheduling. I guess some reasoning behind all of this would be good, to show that the, we aren't doing less, it's just making choices.
Yeah, and the older kids get, they want to work after school to earn money, to get that car, to drive around, that's, you know, so all kinds of influences that you can't see from the data. You have to drill down further.
And Ms. Pena, you realize we're looking at, they just have to be involved in one thing that we're looking on there, and also, we're trying to find trends. So if we see a big variance one year from some, then we, then we're going to be able to go back and say, what are we doing to change that?
Well, there may not be a change, like, if you're just comparing high school. But if you compare junior high to high school, there will be a difference.
Right. But I'm saying, if you follow the trend one year to the next, there shouldn't be that large a difference. And if there is, what caused that?
Right.
Larger difference to help us dive down. Did we change something in the high school curriculum that caused a decrease in that participation?
In just the high school?
That's right.
Okay, I, I can, I can...
So if you're, if you're looking at the trending factor of it, it should help us, and I know what you're saying, but I think it should help us guide and for the future what's happening on those.
Yeah. The measure sixteen looks at student discipline offenses. And Wally and I've had conversa, we've had conversations about all of the data, but in this particular one, what we're reflecting here are the percentage of all discipline offenses that were criminal offenses, and that's a tenth of a percent. And the ones that were classified as disrupting the classroom, and those are two-point-one percent. But we realize that this data, the way the student discipline data is coded, this data might not be reflecting exactly what we're looking for. And I know that Wally had several ideas about how we might approach the look at this data in the future. The next measure looks at facilities. And we had three groups we were looking at, we had feedback from. First is graduating seniors. And those students had a very in-depth survey about facilities that looked at not only, you know, were things clean, but were they functional, were they appropriate, those kinds of things. So graduating seniors had a really in-depth survey. Parents just were asked, is it clean and well-maintained? And so ninety-two percent of parents agreed. And then administrators, the data here reflects how they were grading plant services on the support card survey. And so we really have data from three different measures, all looking at what our facilities look like. So it's coming from, from the three groups. But those who spend most of their time in school are less positive about the facility. So parents see one level, and we really only asked them about the clean and well-maintained. So it's not like we asked them and they agreed everything was, was at that level. But students, I think, were probably very, I mean, their data really parallels that of administrators. So I think that we get the sense that the facilities could be improved. Okay. The next measure looks at the campuses that were granted autonomies for this school year based on performances in the prior year. And what we see here is that ten campuses, representing fourteen percent of the campuses in the district, were granted autonomies. So we expect to see... So we expect to see, uh, as this whole, uh, MPE program is put in place, just hopefully we'll see more schools granted autonomies over, over time. Okay, measure nineteen also came from that graduating students, uh, graduating senior survey. And they had a series of questions that dealt with how safe and secure and respectful the environment is. Uh, and I presume they're reflecting back on their high school. Uh, I would just kind of assume that since they're graduating seniors and their last four years have, have been in that environment. Uh, about six of 10 seniors rated their high school as safe, secure, and respectful environment. So I think this is an area that, uh, reflects some concern. Would hope for it to be somewhat higher. Uh, measure twenty looks at, was kind of jumping over from students to staff and looking at the percent of staff that were retained from one year to the next. And 89% of staff were retained. And to me, this is a very high number, very, um, a good outcome because the amount of staff you can retain means you have less training and retraining and, and work to do to get people up to speed. So this is, um, a, a positive indicator. Okay. Uh, measure twenty-one looked at work culture. And this percentage was derived based on survey, on survey data about, um, their work culture. And so we looked at the proportion of people who rated their work culture as positive, and that was 67%. Um, Studer that did this survey for the district also works with other districts, um, with similar kinds of characteristics. And we looked at the district's rating, Arlington's rating compared to those other districts. And we found that Arlington is similar. And I think you've probably seen that data reported to you earlier. So similar findings across districts that Studer works with. Okay. Um, then we're back to the support card. Remember, we talked about plant services. We use that as a proxy for administrators in terms of rating facilities. Here we're looking at administrators that are rating services that they get from central departments. So they were asked to rate each department individually. And when you aggregate it across those responses, you see that 75% of the campus administrators rated a service from all the areas that they rated as excellent or good. And the standard that is set for, by Studer, to be a good customer service level is 4.5. The average, um, this survey for the central functions was 4.0. So in terms of Studer's, uh, uh, system, the 4.0 is related to the 4.5 standard. So you'd hope to see improvement over time. But in terms of looking at responses across all of the areas, uh, 75% were rated as good or excellent. So I guess what you do is you move those average people up into good and excellent, and then you hope to get there. Mr. Hibbs?
Something that's interesting because I, um, we look within our own organization at times and, uh, looks at organizational health, um, and responses. And, and we always, uh, this is within my private sector. Uh, we always talk about there is about 25% that's going to agree or disagree with the, with the rest. There'll be 25% that'll agree, and then you've got that middle section. And these last two slides seem to, um, uh, reflect that very same thing. Because if you're looking at the, um, um, work culture or, um, uh, with the customer service, it's averaging out at around that 75, uh, percent area. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised by there being that 20% that's just saying ah. You know, because if they're just having a bad day when they're taking that survey, that, that the question could, uh, be skewed just by that one day.
Um, just to follow up with that. So Studer's acceptable range or acceptable target is 4.5. Um, are we working through Studer to come up with strategies to try to increase that? Would be one question for you, Dr. Kavassos. But then a comment, uh, 75% all positive in, in my world, when I do surveys, would be absolutely wonderful. Uh, so it's surprising to me that, that this is really great data. And just like Mr. Hibbs pointed out, 25% i- is pretty typical that are going to be the naysayers, so to speak. So I, I'm curious how, how close we are, uh, the mean four to 4.5. Um, I guess we're not quite good enough. So what, what are we doing?
Yeah, and, uh, Studer is, is going to do, it continues to do training. And that's part of what we're doing with administrators on how to improve this, specifically on providing service to our campuses, and that's what this is, um, in, in relation to getting feedback. And this is the one that is more frequent, right, Wally? The survey of, of principals and assistant principals about our response from central office. This survey will actually be done more frequent, I think, 45 days. And, and so there's, it's more frequent to, to drive that improvement. Uh, because ultimately, we want excellent service for our campuses.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And actually, measure 24 is related to the same, uh, piece because it looks at the training that Studer provided, the leadership training, and asked the folks that were being trained whether or not the training was effective. And nine out of 10 said, yes, it was effective training.
Should that slide actually be 89 and 11, or?
Oh, I think you're right.
Just in case somebody was thinking I was falling asleep hearing this.
Sarah, I just was waiting to see if anybody would catch that, yeah. Oops. Yeah. Okay. All right, now we're looking at some similar satisfaction data. This is from parents, uh, the survey of parents that was completed. And they at, were asked 17 different questions about satisfaction with different areas of their school and the district. And the ratings here, 82% of them were either strongly agree or agree in the way that statements were, these, those would be the positive responses. So, um, they rated learning, discipline feedback, treatment of parents, academic success, safety. They rated lots of different areas. And so this data tells you that parents are pretty satisfied with what they see happening in their child's school.
Quick question, did they have mean data targets with this like they did the other?
Uh, no, I...
I think they do, Wally?
Do they? They do. Okay.
Okay.
You want to address that?
Well, based on what we saw in the other data, this is going to be higher than 4.0.
Sure, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, and then we had a measure that was looking at access of parents to, uh, programs that would engage them and the community in their child's education. And here, we were, we didn't have a wealth of data to choose from. But here, what we're looking at are the number of schools that offer, uh, programs, parents and community, and all of our schools do. And then we're looking at the number of volunteers. And to me, this 10,402 is pretty overwhelming. Um, and I'm always amazed when I see those reports that you get at each board meeting showing the donations and monies that are raised by, uh, on behalf of the schools by parents and, and, uh, supporting groups. To me, that's another indicator of continuing parent support.
Thank you, President Hogg. Um, we had talked about capturing hours of service. Have we made any progress in the ability to capture? Because 10,000 is impressive. That's one out of every six students basically has, you know, somebody that, so that's a ratio of one to six. I'd be curious about hours also.
Aaron Peralas, our new director of parent and community engagement, uh, is reviewing the systems. And he's getting very close to recommending a system that does that.
Okay.
That's one of his, uh, priorities right now.
Okay.
Is to find a system that does that. And there are several that do a very good job of tracking hours, and we want that, so.
And then are we, uh, kind of disaggregating the data to look at per campus? And, you know, to see kind of the performance per campus on, in, in terms of getting parents engaged?
Yes.
Because obviously, if they're volunteering, they're engaged, so.
Right, and disaggregated by campus.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Uh, the last measure looked at support for the district through, uh, for school improvement and the strategic plan. And there were three items on the parent survey that looked at leadership, areas of leadership. And one is that the principal is a, an effective leader, the superintendent's an effective leader, and the superintendent, uh, makes decisions in the best interest of students and parents. And if you look at these response rates from 82%, 77, 76, you see strong, uh, support from parents in terms of their view of district leadership.
In an elected world, 77% is unbelievable. You're not elected, so you're doing really well on that, actually.
I did want to point out one other, uh, in the area of, uh, readiness, college readiness. There are two variables that were slated to be included that are not yet available to the district, and that's ACT and SAT scores. And so when those data become available, those will help shed some important light on some college readiness indicators. Because both of those exams have a benchmark, uh, besides just having a score to compare to the nation or the state, they also have a benchmark score to indicate college readiness. So that'll be some valuable information to add.
I have a question, this might be for Dr. Kavassos. Um, regarding that data, um, let me think here. Lost my train of thought, I'll come back to it, sorry.
Okay. Last two slides really just look at areas of strength and, and areas of, for improvement. And so these are the areas that, from looking across the data, that I felt looked, uh, particularly strong for the district, the CTA, HE courses and certification programs, the students involved in going to extracurricular activities, the lifelong learning behaviors that were identified and agreed with by graduating seniors, the low number of discipline offenses, the retention rates for staff, the positive perceptions of the district leadership, uh, the parent support in terms of their satisfaction with, with, uh, their school, and then the parent and community support based on the data on volunteers and so forth.
I remembered. Sorry about that. Senior moment, and I'm too young for that. The, uh, the, the SAT and ACT information triggered a thought. Uh, we require, or are we going to be requiring it all, is it the 10th graders right now? Or that's the PSAT?
It's the PSAT.
PSAT, but we're not doing any requirement at this point for an SAT or ACT, correct?
No, not at this point.
Okay. And my, my question was really on the, uh, what we discussed earlier as far as the AP exams, uh, that some districts make that a requirement, we don't. Um, at, at what point and where in the process would we, or you all have that type of conversation of if we're going to decide to make it required, you know, is that as a result of curriculum audit or not? And then the, I think the, the obvious understanding that there, there would be that, if we did that as a requirement, that there would be a dip in performance, but then it would, it would correct itself over time, I, I would think, but...
That's correct. And, and I think the, the time we would have that discussion is when we select those three or four. And, and I would, at this point, say that would be one of them that I would recommend. But as we select those three or four high-yield, uh, measures, then we start developing the strategy to affect that. Like, again, Mr. Pompous said, the behaviors, if you will. And so that's when we would have that discussion about, would we require every student to take the exam? And then understanding, very transparently, understanding what may happen to those results for a period of time. But then what the expectation would be over a period of time for performance. That's when we would have that discussion. And, um, same thing with other high-yield, uh, measures. We would dig deeper to, to basically get the right strategy. And I think that would be one to consider very strongly.
Okay, thank you. That was worth remembering, right?
Okay, one last slide here. The areas for improvement, and if, if you look at these, most of them are related to, to the academic side. The star performance and the Gavin mathematics performance, uh, the reading performance at grade one and two, advanced placement, which we've talked about quite a bit, the students that are not on track for graduation and the graduation rates, the students graduating under, even though RH, the recommended and the DAP aren't going to be the program in the future, but the proportion who are taking the rigorous type coursework. And then the college degrees that are earned by the graduates. And facilities issue of adequacy, and then safety, security, respectful environment. The areas that, across all of these measures, that seem to be, uh, in most need of improvement. But as you'll see that note on the bottom, all of these areas are, of course, being worked on through the strategic plan. And I think building on some of the strengths, uh, that are displayed in this data will help the district be able to address these areas of concern with more certainty in terms of, of producing a, a strong outcome. And, you know, the importance of drilling down into the data and looking at those underlying behaviors and measures that can influence those outcomes ultimately.
Thank you, President Hogg. As much, as much I hate to do this, did we skip measure 15?
Did we skip it?
Yeah.
Uh, let me see.
I only bring it up because there's one thing I'd really like to question on there.
Oh, lifelong learning? Lifelong learning, that was what I was...
All right, um, I must have just, I just dozed off for a second then. I, it takes a lot to shock me, all right? And, and I'm looking at the bottom one, they'll read materials not required for class, 54%. I cannot believe that 46% of our kids say they were not encouraged by their teachers to read something besides a textbook. That, that's just criminal. I mean, if our teachers aren't vigorously inviting our kids to read, 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 then we just aren't doing our jobs. I, I, that's such a bogus number. There, I said it. Y'all kids, get out there and read. My goodness.
Well, this, this would be an interesting question to ask at lower grade levels. Uh, because I think you might see a different pattern or trend in this data. And I think the plan is maybe to consider looking at this piece at other points in students' school.
I'm going back to sleep now.
I, I have a, a question on the, uh, the facilities. Uh, this is more for Dr. Kavassos. Uh, the, the results of the, the survey for the parents and the students on how they rated the facilities, that, that particular data set, is that information that will be presented or available for our capital needs group to, along with the facility assessment data? Or are we doing anything with it?
That, that's a, a good question. Um, I don't know that, that that's been shared with, uh, the consultants at this point, but we can.
It might be. I mean, it, there might be some anecdotal, but there might be something where it's correlatable or something.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So, but I'm coming back next month and gonna be reporting on the first review, so the first quarter implementation on this, this year's work on strategic plan, so that will be next.
As always, thank you so much for all the work you do for this district.
Thank you so much for making this understandable for all of us, really appreciate it. It's a lot of stuff, really is, thank you.
We will see you next month.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, District Campus, District and Campus Performance Goals and Objectives, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and at this time we'd like to give an update to the board or provide an update and an opportunity to ask questions on our campus improvement plans and district improvement plans, that process and how it is aligned to our strategic plan. Dr. Carter will be presenting that.
That is rain. It's gully washer. Everybody's windows are up. President Hogg? We need, we need the rain. The, oh, yes, members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. The, this is the two thousand thirteen, fourteen District and Campus Improvement Plans Process Update in anticipation of what is coming to you October third. The development timeline, first of all, is very important. We had several work sessions. They were just optional work sessions for principals to come to, you know, a place that they can engage fully in, in developing their plans, working with each other, spinning things off each other. And those are probably one of the most fruitful things that they've, that they said that they experienced in the whole planning kind of process. So we'll probably continue doing that sort of thing next year. September sixteenth was the, the deadline for the principals to have their plans ready for review by the area superintendents. And the areas to be covered were CIP needs assessments, the goals and performance objectives. September eighteenth, the DIP draft submitted to the DIDC. We are already behind schedule on that one, but we will get that forthwith to the DIDC members. September sixteenth through the twentieth, the area superintendents actually reviewed the CIPs. September twentieth through the twenty-fifth, revisions are made by the campuses themselves. And apparently there are lots of revisions being underway right now, even as we speak. September twenty-sixth, the final CIPs will be placed on the website. By September thirtieth, the DIDC will have reviewed and finalized the DIP. October third is presented to the board for approval on the DIP and CIPs, particularly with the performance, the goals and the performance objectives. October fourth through the twenty-fourth, then the campuses will be working with their SEDMs, the Site-Based Decision-Making Committees, and continuing to develop the DIP and CIP strategies. October sixteenth through the twenty-ninth, it overlaps there because some will finish earlier than others. Sixteenth through the twenty-ninth, the area superintendents will review the CIP strategies. And October thirtieth, the CIP is to be completed. And October thirty-first, the DIP and all CIPs will be online for board review, or board view, excuse me. There are three goals that are specifically required. Part of the board policy indicates that there's supposed to be this alignment that goes between the district and the campuses. So we all have three goals that are required, so that immediately puts it in sync with each other. The on-track for graduation, that's been mentioned today, and I'll go into that a little bit more. It applies to all school levels. And basically, the, the district's goal, or I should say, the way the campuses are going to have it worded is to contribute to the district's goal of a two percent increase. The campus goal is to increase on-track for graduation from, and then indicate what it was this past year and what the goal is for them to achieve this, this coming year. The second goal is all tests passed, and that's on STAR only. And the way the campuses, the wording is, to contribute to the district's goal of a three percent increase, the campus goal is to increase all tests passed from, again, what they got. That's the index one on the accountability system. Just when, we, we didn't know how all this was going to flesh out with the accountability and all that sort of thing. So next year, I'm sure we'll have goal one synonymous with index one, you know, that sort of thing. So it'll be a little bit more aligned that way. But right now, goal two is index one of the accountability system. And then, goal three, we reshaped to have a little bit more aligned with what is going on in, in the implementation of our strategic plan and the STUDER process, the surveys, everything else. It is about the learning environment. And so there's not a numerical goal directly on there as a goal, but it will appear in the performance objectives. Stated this way, to contribute to the district's goal of increasing employee engagement and parent satisfaction survey ratings, the campus goal is to meet specific targets in each. And those targets are established by STUDER that if you're at such, such level, you should have this kind of increase. Other goals, there are two additional required goals that the campuses and, and also the, the district improvement plan will, will cover. They must be related to the strategic plan. And then there's an optional or optional goals that the campuses and the district might have. They don't have to be directly related to the strategic plan, but almost anything that's going to be done, it's going to have some bearing. It just doesn't necessarily have that directive of bearing. System safeguards, there's a requirement that any deficiencies in the system safeguards is to be addressed in the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plan. Deficits must be addressed, as it says, for all groups. With the performance results, anything that's less than fifty percent, that is regarded as a deficiency. And of course, it has to meet certain minimum requirements of, of student group size, there has to be at least twenty-five students. So, but that is one of the things, triggers that says, okay, here's a system safeguard that you're going to have to address in the plan. For the participation results, anything for any of the groups that's, that's less than ninety-five percent participation in the testing. The graduation rates, just for high school, anything that's less than seventy-eight percent for a four-year graduation rate or eighty-three percent for a five-year graduation rate. There is one other thing, which is a safe harbor of AYP. I'm not going to go into it, but there is a certain way, if you have certain kind of improvement, that will keep you from having a deficit. Performance objectives, goal one, on-track for graduation. Performance objectives, it has to address the areas with the greatest need. Mind you, what we try to emphasize is be very focused. You're not going to be able to address everything. Because if you have too many things in there, then there's quite a good likelihood that, that a lot of it will not be achieved. Make it realistic, reasonable, challenging, but focused. So there to go with the areas that, with the greatest need, based on the information they got from the on-track table. The potential areas are, of course, the course subject passing rates, that's for all grade levels. The STAR performance, grades three through high school, and that's based on Phase One Level Two standard. The commissioner has recommended to himself that we'll continue with the Phase One standard. We had two years of Phase One. This year was scheduled to be Phase Two, which is ratcheting up the, the standard for achieving, getting the passing standard. So we're, since it is the commissioner recommending it, we feel that, yes, Phase One is probably going to be the, the goal for this year's accountability. So they have to address that. But if they choose this area, if they choose this area, they have to add a performance objective to address increasing percent meeting recommended, the final, that's the last phase, Level Two standards. And one of the things that, as an example, with grade three, the difference between the recommended standard for passing and the advanced standard is four questions. Four questions, okay, in reading. So it tells you just how high that standard is. And if you ever see those reports, I haven't given just a report by itself, but the summary tables that come from the state, it gives all three phases of performance. And that recommended level is incredibly challenging, so, but that's where we're headed.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Four out of how many questions?
Oh, I think there are forty items on that test.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's forty. If memory serves me. Grades, kinder in first grade, the end-of-year DRA, EDL, and what, basically, the diagnostic reading tests, the diagnostic mathematics tests. So that's part of it, too. The grade two norm reference test, Elaine had gone over the results on, on each of those. Attendance rate, the ninety percent standard that we have, which is synonymous with what is in the AYP as well. And for the high school, you have the number of credits. Now, one of the reasons that we have just this, what seems to be this, this small increase as a goal is because of all this information behind what that goal represents. Because you could have a real surge in one area or two areas, but the overall may still be problematic as far as achieving it. The, the other thing is to keep in mind that, one of the things is, is clear that we know that from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, we, we remained steady. We didn't have the improvement in, for instance, index one. So the, you know, it, it just shows that even though there's been a lot of initiative and working in, like the PLC, data-wise, applications, everything else, still, it's, it's been pretty stable. So the two percent increase on the on-track for graduation, which includes the testing thing across the board, it just says that, that's going to be quite a challenge by itself. For goal two, all tests pass, again, that's just, that is index one, and that is the STAR. Address, again, just the areas with the greatest need. What do I mean by that? It might be that a particular accountability group was, the gap was particularly low compared to everything else, and it looks like you're going to have to address that in particular. It doesn't mean that the performance objective would be a three percent increase. It might mean that that has to be like a ten percent increase. It could be much more substantial when it comes to the performance objective in order to get that overall increase of the three percent for the district. Again, it's based on the Phase One Level Two STAR performance. And here, under this particular goal, they do have to have a performance objective that addresses meeting the recommended Level Two standard. It addresses the deficiencies in the system safeguards. It would be strictly under this, this particular goal because it is dealing specifically with the tests and the participation. Goal three, learning environment, we have the, under the performance objectives. Now, again, these are performance objectives that they have to have. They can have additional ones, but this is what is the, what is, is necessary. They have to address.
Can I ask you a question, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
I, I just thought of this, with, with the goal two, with at least one performance objective to address increasing the percent meeting recommended Level Two. With any of these, are, are these campuses provided, I guess, support and ideas? And maybe some examples of what these different objectives could be, whether it's from the area superintendents or just from best practices that are out there? Or are they coming up with it completely on their own, based on their own data and ideas?
Yes.
Everything? Okay.
It's all the above.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
And it has to. This, the, the challenge is so great when it comes to that, that particular standard.
Yeah.
It's, it's all ahead, and, and do whatever is, is going to be working. Hopefully, it's research-based, evidence-based, it looks, this is promising, let's, let's try this. Working through the PLCs, particularly, that is our, that's our best bet in terms of improvement overall in a, in a very broad-based kind of way, systematic. But it's, it's injecting all those PLCs with that kind of know-how. We want informed conversations.
Yeah.
Not just conversations of opinion.
Right.
It's informed conversations of what looks promising, and let's try it. So that's, that's where they'll be.
To, to come up with more than educated guesses, if you will, are you able to pull some of the, what may have been better practices or strategies that worked with the old system to say, maybe we can target these areas as, to provide the beginning examples for these folks?
I can't myself so much, but the curriculum people have identified a lot of that.
Okay, good.
This is not a matter of the curriculum folks having no idea what to do. There's a lot of know-how by them, and so it's getting it translated into the campuses actually implementing it.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, it's, it's through collaboration, and it is through, you know, discovery of, of these, these matters and, and trying. It's kind of like a, a culture of action research. This looks like it's promising, let's try it, let's see what the outcome is, and let's make adjustments accordingly.
And with, with that said, it's not, it, it's really complicated because it's not specifically to every level of school or class. You're also breaking down the, the different schools themselves, the, the demographics that they have in, in those schools. I mean, there's lots of moving parts to try to put this together.
When, when you look at the tables behind the, just the four indexes for the accountability, I mean, it's just a lot of data points. Remember the one thousand four hundred and forty-one indices? Well, that's almost just by the accountability system itself, just by itself. And so it, there's an awful lot. So digging deep into the data is important, especially when you're not quite sure just what, where you should, where you should focus.
Yeah.
But, but then the challenge is even once you have the data dug, it's, okay, now what are you going to do?
Yeah.
Once you, once you discover that.
Well, thank you.
So with goal number three, with the learning environment, you have the, the first one, performance objective, being to address the employee engagement survey results. And it's go from wherever they were to, again, the goal, and they're to use the STUDER guidelines. Robin Larg and Janet Pilcher, what they, Robin Larg provided a, a list of, of here you are with the survey results. If you're at this point, you should have this much growth. If you're at this point, you have this much growth. So the, the improvement is pretty much set as a standard. Then also a, a performance objective to increase the parent satisfaction, again, according to the STUDER survey results, going from what it was to what it's supposed to be. Now, with the parent satisfaction, that doesn't come until next spring, okay? That'll be March, April, somewhere in there. The employee engagement, there'll be two more. There's one that'll be in November, and there'll be another one in, again, March, April, somewhere in there. So, so even the CIPs will get adjusted. Whatever goal they have in there, it's, basically, they gotta, they have to say, give it a timeline because it's supposed to be for the next one, this is what you're supposed to achieve. And so it'll be, it'll be interesting, you know, to see how all that flushes out. And lastly, one performance objective must address safety and security. It's either here, which I think is a nice area to put it in for a learning environment, or to have it as a separate goal entirely. But state requires that there, that there be this, this area addressed in the CIP and the DIP. Questions?
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. Evening, Dr. Carter.
Good evening, sir.
With the demise of the senior-level STAR tests, we're going from a great number down to a few intercourse tests.
Yes.
Can you look into your crystal ball or your magic eight ball and forecast that if we remove all those upper-level tests from the accountability system, are we back to ground zero and trying to figure out where we actually are? Because we're not going to be able to compare next year to this year, or can we?
Next year, we'll, what they call, reconfigure the baseline again, okay? The state provides a lot of that themselves. For instance, index one is supposed to identify, help you identify what your lowest groups are that you have to address. Well, that kind of, right now, that includes, for the high schools, includes all those EOCs. Well, but for next year, that is pared down quite a bit. And so, you know, how, how that's all going to get addressed by the state, that, that's one thing. For us, when it comes to our metrics and everything else that we're doing and the on-track.
Right.
That'll be all reconfigured based on just. That'll be all reconfigured based on just that, so that there's going to be apples-to-apples kind of comparison. I would think that, for instance, with the high school, those on-track figures will go up simply because there's not nearly as many, you know, for instance, world geography, which was not the greatest performance, but world history, all those, you know, will be out. So, which, well, I won't say anything. It's like a quiz. It's kind of like, did everybody know that the state of Texas had a research? And part of it was to see which EOC gave, was the best predictor of SAT scores? Critical reading. And of course, everybody thinks ELA. It was world geography. It was world geography. And one of the main reasons is, in the end, the SAT, where the kids don't seem to be doing as well, is in the nonfiction area. Well, world geography is nonfiction, okay? Whereas ELA, there's the dominance of a lot of other literature in there. So it's just interesting and curious that that's one of the tests that's been removed. But it's the best predictor of performance on the SAT.
Mr. Hibbs.
Dr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Do you feel that the district and the campus improvement plans are beneficial?
As living documents, yes. As an exercise, just to, for compliance, oh, it probably has some benefit of, helps the mind kind of think along certain lines, but that's about all.
The reason I ask that is, we're having this discussion right now. Three years ago, we didn't have this discussion. Three years ago, this was tucked somewhere within a a board agenda that said, we need to approve these things. And I got prodded by my fellow trustee, Ms. Sullins. She and I read all seventy-four of them. And we found out that we were the only ones that have read those. We have gone a long way in three years. Because this, as we can see, it can tie in with the strategic plan. It can tie in to what we want to see as our vision. And, you know, being able to see where you're using the area superintendents to review the campus improvement plans, I mean, that's putting an administrative and a campus collaboration together.
Yes.
People understanding at the campus level, hey, we are reading these things. We hear some ideas, and you're saying that they're going through a whole host of revisions. So if from, what I'm reading from that is there's this interchange of ideas. Have you thought about this? Have you, is this, so I couldn't be more ecstatic to hear, and I was setting you up there at the first, obviously. I couldn't be more ecstatic to hear that we are in a position today that we're actually doing something with these as opposed to them being just something that we have. You know, a stale document that's sitting on some website. On your slide three, as far as the timeline, you don't have to go back to it, but October 31st, it says, it says the board's going to approve these on October 3rd. And then on October 31st, DIP and CIP is online for board view. It's online for parent review at that time, isn't it also?
It has to be made available, definitely. I don't know what the, this is a software that's being used, Plan for Learning. And you have to have access to go in there. And so I don't know that, we definitely have to have certain copies available.
I was thinking about the, are the campus, at each campus, is it not available through their campus?
As part of the process, we've bought some software to help in this process, the planning process and all that. And so I think there's a way to post them or PDF them.
We can PDF all of them.
That's right.
And so they can be compiled, and each campus can have their own, that could be on their website, for instance, on the district website, again, the same thing.
Okay.
So they're all there, or they will be all there.
Well, again, this is one of those things I want to applaud the district for. I believe that the collaboration between the campus and the administration, I know you're helping to lead that charge there. So, you know, my hat's off to you, and I have to tell you, I'm very impressed. I appreciate this presentation. I think it's laid out well, and it's asking the right questions.
I want to be sure that Debbie Williams-
Oh, absolutely.
And Evan Smith and our area superintendents, who even as we speak are working on those very revisions. So just to keep things in the top.
Thank you for that. Ms. Sullins.
Thank you, President Hogg. Dr. Carter, I share, I think all of the whole team would share their gratitude for the tremendous amount of work that must have been. This must have been a Herculean effort. We are a very large system, and to take these plans and develop them, or we have them articulated down through the campus levels is a tremendous accomplishment. And I think that's something that we should celebrate in this evening. So, Dr. Carter, for you and your staff, and for everyone that's involved with putting these together and articulating them and transforming them into living documents, I appreciate that. And I believe that it'll be an essential component to transforming the district. When we look at the presentation before on where we want to be and how we're going to get there, this is part of that architecture that we talked about. I do have one question, maybe it's for you, Dr. Kavasos. Beyond the October 31st timeline listed on the chart, will we, will we go back and evaluate our progress against these plans?
Short answer is yes, and Wally has more to say about that, I'm sure.
The plans themselves, on Plan for Learning, one of the things you will find are these periodic status symbols as to, like quarterly reports. At this point in time, how much has been accomplished. And Plan for Learning, the eight oh six technologies, they are actually having the software together. We're going to be one of those beta sites to try it out, is to aggregate all that. So we'll have an aggregation of the status of these plans. So, yes, and there's going to be, I'm sure, continued interaction, you know, by the areas who attends back to the campuses on those.
I think that's outstanding, so that we can see. I want to be sure that when we do receive all that information, re-aggregate at the end of the day, that we don't say, you know, hey, we made a eighty or whatever the number is, because I want to make sure that we have a lot of stretch goals in there. And, you know, we had to be careful, you know, in that. But I think it's important to go back and look. And I think that's, I think that's something new with these campus improvement plans that you're planning now that hasn't been done in the past, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Good, good, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullins. Mr. Pampa.
Thank you, President Hogg. Dr. Carter, I absolutely agree that these are, you know, far better than what they did, and love the goals and the ability to track that. I think my only concern is, and I do have a concern on that number one goal, and I know that, you know, that's something that's really important to us for the on-track to graduation. There's so much in there. And there's just so, it's such a rich, or what was the term that you used for that one goal? I mean, there's just-
It's a mass of indices.
Yes, it's a lot. And, you know, my concern in setting goals is the psychological effect that they have on our behavior and then, you know, our performance against them. And I spend a lot of time on goal-setting for myself, for my business, just about everything I do. And I just think that that's going to be a challenge on that one particular goal. Again, I understand why it's there, because probably the most important goal that we have is to get our kids on track to graduation. But at the granular level of the schools and what they can do to affect it, I just wonder if it may be, you know, a little bit more effective in what we're trying to do to take it apart a little bit and maybe address some of the bigger components within that goal as a goal for the campuses. So the bigger components are, you know, attendance is big. We know that we can't teach kids if they're not there. You do have one, the star, the star test. What are the other big components in there?
The course, the actual grades. The actual grades, and for high school, the credits. If they have sufficient credits for the next level. So, again, all this will be recast once again based on grades, for instance. The first six weeks, there's going to be, how is it going to get revamped for the existing kids? There is a table, and maybe you don't know, there's a table, this is just one figure, which is the overall. The campus has got this, and it has all the grades for all the, you know, each of the subjects. And of course, the overall for each grade as well. So they can identify by grade level, they can identify with the subject, what areas they need to address. So as far as a campus improvement plan, they can really strategically go after those areas that need to be addressed, that are probably going to be at the most mileage in raising overall the on-track result. So they're not sort of left to just wondering, well, where can I, you know, look at me, look at all this other data, you know, someplace else, to look at the course passing rates, you know, which is a different report that they get. It's not just doing that. They get this table, they know what that is, and they can identify three, four, five areas that will be very strategic on their part to address and move that along. The other side of it, Ms. Pampa, is it's very much in sync with the very first objective of our strategic plan. And it is a rather rigorous index because it is, if there's any below grade level or not passed anywhere, that students regard as not being on grade level. But that is synonymous with what is ahead for hundred percent graduating with career and college readiness, and with the increased standards that the state is giving. It's called, yes, if there's any standard that the kindergartner or the first grader is not meeting on grade level, they're not on track for graduation without intervention.
And I completely agree with all of those and the critical importance of this, of this one particular goal and how it's aligned to our number one goal, in essence. But again, I'm just thinking of a campus, for example, that, you know, puts a lot of effort, a lot of work into this goal, and then they, you know, they don't really move that needle a whole lot because it's going to be really hard to move that needle. I mean, they have to do a lot of things, and all of those things, they have to do really, really well to move that needle even a little bit. On top of that, to move the needle at the district level. I mean, so you may have a campus that says, okay, our goal is going to be to increase our our own on-track for graduation by five percent, let's just say, because we think we can do it. And they do it, but maybe we still don't meet our two percent at the district level. So it's like, where's the reward for the effort, in essence, that, well, you know, we didn't do it? So, and part of the success of goals is that you celebrate those wins, you know, whenever you can.
Yes.
You set a goal, you achieve it, you celebrate it, you set another goal, and you keep moving forward. And so, again, this one is going to be so difficult, whereas, you know, something that is a little bit smaller, in essence, that is still a component of here. Again, that's just, you know, this is a work session. It's something that I was thinking about in terms of, you know, how we structure that, because that's really, really, really big to make, to make any headway in that. And to have it as one of the actual goals, you know, it's going to be hard to make a big dent and to have that sense of accomplishment that-
Right.
I believe is necessary to, you know, begin the discipline of, especially as we're starting, of setting goals, achieving them, you know, celebrating and continuing to do that. So just some discussion in terms of, you know, whether that, that big of a goal should be on there as one. My feedback on that.
Thank you, Mr. Pampa. Dr. Kavasos.
Yes, thank you, President Hogg. On, if we can go back to one of the slides, Wally, the way we're addressing the performance objectives, I think the area superintendents and the interaction with the campuses are making this one in particular very meaningful to them. The one slide, if we can get it back, on the performance objectives, that's how we're articulating how you can move the needle on this one. I'll give you an example on an elementary campus where you can target and really make a big difference, and that's on DRA and first grade or kinder, you pick the grade level. And Wally has provided the campus with every grade level and their analysis of DRA scores and all this kind of stuff. And so if a campus focuses on running records and addressing literacy at first grade and can move that, and they can, and that's where the area superintendents have been working with the campus principals, on identifying the lowest areas or some of the potential areas so that they can have that big improvement. I think that's how they're making it meaningful. At the high school level, I mean, we've talked to some of the high school principals, they're looking specifically at, are you earning credit? And so once a student starts falling behind, to what level are they earning their credit back? Specifically freshmen. And some initiatives, and I'll, you know, use some schools, Sam Houston is an example, where they have a freshman center specifically addressed, addressing the credit accrual of the population so that they can move that needle. So I think, I think from the interaction with the area superintendents and Wally's sessions and things like that, trying to make that as meaningful as possible so that there is a way to make some improvement quickly. Attendance is one, and you heard it from Elaine as an example. In some campuses, that's not going to make a big difference because that is already high. And so they wouldn't pick that as one of their performance objectives. So that's a little bit more detail, you know, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Wally, but that's how they're making it meaningful at a campus level with, DRA is, I guess, the best example because we've had some discussion, area superintendents are setting that target, helping campuses set them high and providing strategies for that improvement.
So let me ask something specifically on that. Let's say that a campus, an elementary campus, puts a strong focus on DRA, and they improve it by ten percent. Or what's a goal that we're looking at for improvement there? Are we looking at fifty percent improvement?
Depends where they are.
Yeah, depends where they are.
If they're at twenty percent, then they probably should have more like twenty to thirty percent increase.
So let's say that they had twenty percent increase.
Right.
Twenty-five percent increase. How much would the needle move for that whole campus in terms of their total on-track to graduation? Have you modeled something like that?
Divide that by seven grades, that's basically what you have, so that's almost three.
So three, that alone would move it three percent.
I mean, when you think of, when you think of it in terms of just twenty percentage points, and there's seven, and there's seven grade levels, and everything else stays the same, then increasing just that one grade level by twenty percentage points would divide by seven, and you'd get close to three percentage points.
You wouldn't divide it by all the total of each objective?
Well, I'm sort of thinking that they're-
To get the total-
The weights are about the same for all grades.
Okay, so you're assuming that, yeah.
And the reason being is, and this, the beauty of a lot of some of these kinds of things is, if you attack DRA, sorry, if you do it, you know, really well-
Address.
Address DRA. If you address DRA, and with whatever information you get, and you know how to get this child go from this point to this point, and you get that huge increase in percent of students making it, that's going to have an effect, I mean, we're talking reading, is going to have an effect on course grades, subject grades. It's not like something by itself. That's what makes it more strategic. Look in terms of where you can get the most mileage. If you address this, it's probably going to have some great effects on other areas. And so I would think that even with something like DRA with increase of twenty percent, it's probably going to increase the reading score, the social studies grade, science grade. I don't know about math, but I mean, at least the others that require reading.
And just in terms of, again, just in terms of deciding which goals to set, because we do want goals, and we want them to be, you know, achievable, measurable. And just, and look at that one. Maybe this is too lax, but maybe asking them what performance objective and what, or what increase, or on what, or pick one performance objective that you're going to focus on and, you know, and that will drive this overall. But if you pick one, then they can really measure it, then their, their goal may be twenty percent increase in the DRA. And so they, it's measurable, achievable, and we know if they do that, it's going to drive that on-track to graduate without focusing on- it's going to drive that on-track to graduate without focusing on something that's barely going to move.
Yes, and that's exactly what the area superintendents are doing, because in some cases, the DRA scores at some schools are very high, and they've met those standards.
Correct.
So to, to say I'm going to focus on DRA is not going to make a big difference.
Correct, no, I mean, just saying they could pick one.
Yeah, and so that's what they're working with, with the principals, which is the value of that. And, and they're able to see at different campuses with similar demographic, et cetera, why some DRA scores are not as high as others, and then where the really progress needs to be made. So some would focus on DMA, some are going to do attendance, some are going to do star performance, wherever their issues are, I think
Yeah.
is, is the direction they're getting from the area superintendents.
Okay, well, just, again, I'm seeing that they could do that and not move the needle enough to, to have that positive reinforcement that we made a big improvement, so we drive improvement in one of the objectives by substantial margin, and our on-track to graduate only grew 3% or 4% or something like that. I mean, that's just my, my own, my own thinking there, my own experience on, on goal setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Next up, Dr. Kavassos, curriculum audit update.
Thank you, President Hogg, and we'd like to give the board a, a brief update on our curriculum audit and our next steps. The last time we heard a report was, I think, in June, perhaps from, I forgot his name.
Kevin Singer.
No, Kevin Singer. And so Evan Smith is going to give us a report on where we are with our curriculum audit and our next step.
President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos. Let's see if I can get the video on. Thank you. I'm glad to come and let you know that we do have a curriculum audit, and we have draft taken off that, and we are working hard. I want to go back and review a few things with you and just kind of tie it back to our framework of success and our inspired learners and our effective leadership and our engaged community. Under inspired learners, it's preparing our graduates to excel in higher education or the career of their choice. In effective leadership, it's the AISD will recruit and retain the most effective people by rewarding excellence and providing opportunities for continual growth. And in engaged community, it's actively engaging and partnering with parents in the educational experience. And tying it back to our beliefs, we believe that effective teaching and leadership are essential for the student achievement, as well as school environment's impact achievement, and that each one of our students in AISD can succeed. This all ties to our vision of being globally acknowledged as a premier school district, and definitely to our mission, which is to empower and engage all students to be contributing, responsible students reaching their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. Again, the purpose of the audit, when it was selected, was to provide school boards and administrators and community members with a comprehensive, objective look at how well our system is delivering the teaching and the learning for our students. It really identifies where the system is for quality and what we need to do for improvement. I know that we've seen the triangle lots of times, it has the written curriculum at the top, and how it ties to the TOT curriculum, and how it ties to the tested curriculum, and that's the basis for our curriculum audit, how well are we doing in that triangle of achievement? So the audit by the numbers. Once we had the audit returned to us, we know that it was built upon the five standards, and it is 1,134 pages long, it has 34 findings, 11 recommendations, 149 exhibits or data tables, and then 16 appendices. So it's very thorough.
That's an understatement.
Great bedtime reading, yes. And what does it look for? It looks for these five things. It talks, it looks at what systematic processes are in control for resources, programs, and personnel, and remember that this is a discrepancy model. We want to know where our gaps are between what we have and a standard. And so that is exactly what they've, they've come in and looked at. And the second one is what clear and valid objectives are in place for our students, what are internal consistencies and rationale equities in our programs, and then how are the results from assessments used to adjust, improve, or terminate ineffective practices and programs? And finally, what processes does the district utilize for continual improvement in organizational So what are our next steps? Where are we right now? What we want to do now is we want to look at our findings, and we, we need to see what needs to be changed for systematically in making sure that we get better. What are the changes that we need to have to the written curriculum, to our TOT curriculum, and to our resources and materials, along with what processes can we look at to improve? And then what goals and expectations should we more clearly define? So what we've done now is we have 11 recommendations, and we've taken those recommendations and we've assigned them to a committee chairperson, who will then form a committee to work on each of these. The committee chairperson will also make up what's called the district task force. So we have recommendation one, which has to do with board policy, along with recommendation eight, which deals with personnel, and that will be headed by Mr. Michael Hill. Recommendation two is a comprehensive system-wide planning, Cindy Powell will head that, and technology planning. Cindy's over this one, but Chad will be leading the initiative in the technology planning. Recommendation three is the curriculum management plan, will be led by Renee Pope, and recommendation four, the alignment of curriculum assessment and the instructional model, as you well know, is Renee's, under Renee's leadership. Debbie Williams will be looking at recommendation nine, which deals with professional development. Our own Dr. Wally Carter will do recommendation five and recommendation 11, which are student achievement assessment and program evaluation, along with program intervention selection and evaluation system. Debbie and Bob Carlyle will be leading seven, which is the development of strategies to eliminate issues related to equity and equality. And then 10 will be a comprehensive curriculum-driven budget process, of course, which Ms. Powell will lead. So what's our roadmap right now? And that, the first thing that we've done is we've formulated a task force, and that's a steering committee for the audit implementation process, and that's composed of those central office personnel that we just named as, as heads, also including myself. We will create subcommittees for each of the recommendations as necessary. Some of the recommendations are large, very large, others are not quite so large, so many of them will have subcommittees. And this will be both with campus and central office administrators, along with curriculum staff. The subcommittee work will be centered around processing, prioritizing, and implementing, implementation plans based on the recommendations. So they'll take each of the recommendations and they'll, they'll find plans of actions and put timeframes around those. And then now the work begins. So what we have here, on the upper left, is our curriculum audit and the recommendations, and kind of tied to that is the instructional model. And we will have those committees working together to look at all of those things and put those things back in place, and also recommend timeframes for them over time, and that's going to go to the task force. And the task force, again, being that core area of, of central administration. And what we will do then is look at all the recommendations and put them all, align them all out, and figure out the best timeframe for implementation and for study and for more extensive work with the, with the curriculum audit as it relates to any new initiatives and those types of things that, things that we have. Then the task force will bring it to the superintendent's cabinet. And then as the superintendent's cabinet, what our job will be, will be to balance all of it together with all of the other things that we're doing within the district. We have many things going on with our facilities assessments, our management initiatives, our MPE, our STUDER, lots and lots of different things going on. So our goal there is to make sure that we keep everything in balance, and we can look and adjust as necessary so that we can make sure that we've got things moving smoothly. So our timeline is, is on August 16th, we had our first task force meeting. On August 20th, we had a committee member identification, and then we also have the development of an analysis tool that we can use so that we have some commonalities between reporting out on each of those, those recommendations, which again, are 11. This month, we're finalizing committees, and the subcommittees will begin the work. Next month, we're going to bring all of the subcommittees back together and report out. And then in December, we're going to be compiling all the information that we get. January, we're going to gather more information and evidence as needed, and then in February or March, we'll review all the data and make recommendations and releases. And just for your information, there's lots of things going on parallel to this time. There's not things that are stopping and we're waiting for all of these things to happen. But this will just be, we'll have, you know, timelines from months to years in some cases. So we'll be able to report our, our progress to you along the way. Any questions? Lots going on.
I don't get any sleep.
Some, some sleep.
Ms. Smith, you're going to earn every bit of that chief academic officer title, aren't you?
Thank you, guys.
Remember, you applied for this position.
That I did.
I, I, just from your presentation, you're right on for this, and this is a huge asset, so we look forward to hearing more about this.
It's very much a team effort. Thank you.
Up next, we'll have Dr. Rice, capital needs steering committee update.
Thank you, President Hogg. Now, this will be brief. I just want to give the board an update as to where we are with our capital needs steering committee and the focus and direction where we're going. We had the first meeting Monday night, the 16th, for the committee, and during that committee, I guess there's, are we going to do slides at the same time here? No, we don't have to. The, the meeting was introductory in nature, just about everybody was there that was appointed to this committee. I'd like to thank all of the staff that, that was there. Virtually every single director and above position was there from all departments. It was, it was great, all available to, to help this community group. The, the groundwork was laid for what will be coming in the future. The, the focus was laid out to them that this is going to be a very important committee to balance and, and comprehend the building's current conditions, what's needed, as well as the educational adequacy of the buildings and our facilities in general, and to keep that in the forefront of their, their minds at all times. The visioning process is something that is very important for this committee, for us as a board, for the district, and, and there are, are, are different capital needs areas such as technology and fine arts, for example, are going through their, their own visioning process right now. And as mentioned earlier, that's something that we'll discuss during our called meeting on Saturday. The, the committee broke out into two groups. One was to discuss ways on how to communicate to the community, to the district, et cetera, and there's, gosh, there was probably 70 different items of opportunities that they found, and this was within 10 to 15 minutes. They did great work in a short amount of time. And that will be coming back at the next meeting. The other group was starting to formulate essentially a theme, a tagline, if you will, for what this work will be, instead of just calling it capital needs steering committee or what our future facilities' needs are. They're coining, coining a, a term that we'll all get behind and rally behind. There were also nominations and volunteers that put themselves, or put themselves up as a volunteer to be a committee chair or co-chair overall for the capital needs committee, and there were three, maybe four, names that came out of that. And at our next meeting, the, the committee will go through and figure out what their process is going to be. The, the likely scenario is there'll be a co-chair type of position, so two people over the, the committee, and, but that's up to the committee to determine, and they, they understand that, that they'll come back and, and vote however they're going to vote. So they're, I think they're, they're empowered, it was a, a great group. The, some of the data that was discussed, it will be very good to see, they're, they're going to get so much data, but it, it was very good for them to see some of the preliminary information that's coming from our consultants on our building conditions, what the, the percentage of building matches, what it is intended for based on its capacity, based on its need and age, and it's some, some very compelling data, and they'll, they'll really get into that in the, in the weeks and months to come. I don't have in front of me when our next meeting is. I believe the first subcommittee meetings are as early as next Tuesday, is that right? Next Tuesday? So they're, they're really getting to work on this. And, and as far as those subcommittees go, just so the board knows, they had sign-up sheets, are big, on the wall, posted on the wall for individuals to go ahead and, and sign up for different areas of interest. And the defined areas of capital needs right now are fine arts, transportation, and technology, thank you. So, and, everybody points to Chad.
Sorry, Chad.
So these are going to be very, very productive meetings. They also discussed possible locations for the two community meetings that, that will occur, and I think our staff is probably already working on solidifying those dates and locations as well. So I think the, the mood in the room is, was one of anticipation and excitement, and I think everybody's really now ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work.
Perfect.
So that's all we have right now.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Dr. Rice, are the committee meetings taking place in the PDC?
Yes, they are.
And they're all open to the public?
They are all open to the public, and I believe that information is on our website. If not, there's links to where it is at the, the facilitator's website.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you, the committee, for all the work, and we'll thank them even more as they really dive into it. I don't think they know how much work is about to be before them, so. Next up, Mr. Barron, board governance committee update.
I'm going to call Ms. Powell to do a little presentation. Thank you.
Good delegation.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavassos, good evening, and we'll be brief here. The board governance committee is made up of three members, Mr. Barron, Ms. Pena, and Mrs. Solins. Among other duties, this board governance committee has, is one of its responsibilities, government relations. And so we're going to report on government relations activities this evening. We've been working with the board governance committee and with the superintendent to reach out to TEA, the State Board of Education, to state our district's position on rulemaking that is taking place right now to implement the provisions of House Bill 5 that was passed during the legislative session. House Bill 5 was the signature piece of education legislation passed this last session. In part, this bill deals with graduation requirements, and so that's the topic that we've been working on the last couple of weeks. In particular, we've sent a letter to the TEA commissioner regarding emergency rules for selection of a diploma plan. We'll explain that more in just a moment. And then also, Dr. Kavassos gave testimony on Tuesday at the State Board of Education hearing on the graduation requirements, because that body is about to begin setting, determining what advanced courses are, and determining what courses will satisfy the requirements for the various endorsements that a student can earn on his or her diploma. In regards to emergency rules, on August 29th, the commissioner announced his intention to file rules that would allow seniors this year, class of 2014, to select to graduate under the new foundation program. The foundation program is what was legislated as part of House Bill 5, is the new single diploma plan. So the commissioner did announce that, that he would file some rules that would allow some students to graduate under that plan. So the board governance committee and superintendent prepared a letter to the commissioner urging him to extend that and allow seniors to also graduate with an endorsement on their diploma this year, should. this year, should, in the end, after the State Board of Education has set the courses that satisfy those endorsements, should the classes they've already taken in their high school careers align with those new endorsement courses, that they would go ahead and have that opportunity to earn an endorsement on their diploma. The State Board had a hearing on Tuesday specifically on graduation requirements, and Dr. Kavasos and Evan Smith and I traveled to Austin that day, and Dr. Kavasos testified. The three things you see here on the slide are the three points that Arlington ISD made with the board. We asked that the board consider flexibility to allow us to partner with higher education institutions and businesses to develop our own courses that would satisfy the advanced credits and prepare students for post-high school opportunities. We used the example of the firefighter academy as an example of a very successful partnership that we've had locally that provides some very rigorous coursework for students. We also asked that they, that the board identify a broad array of courses, including career tech courses, to satisfy the requirements for each of the five endorsement categories. And we've asked them to specifically to recognize the different interests that students have and give them a broad range of choices within those five endorsement categories. And then, finally, we asked that they finalize the list of advanced courses in a very timely manner, no later than January of this year. We heard this quite a lot from other speakers, because most school districts are starting that process, that registration process, in January. So, we need that information early enough that we can get it into course handbooks, and the counselors can prepare for it and advise kids, and then, students and their parents would have ample opportunity to make choices before they actually have to register. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
First off, thank you, Governance Committee, for working on this and seeing this through. It's very important. Devil's in the details, and making the rules versus what was legislated is so important. So, I really appreciate that, and I appreciate you all taking that nice leisurely drive down to Austin and having, having that opportunity to testify. The, a couple of questions that I have. One, generally with the, the hope of having students eligible to, for this year, to have the choice for graduation under the foundation plan, as well as what we asked about the endorsement potential, are either of those perceived to provide those students, afford those students, a competitive advantage as far as college acceptance and that type of thing?
From our perspective, it is, and that's, that's the whole purpose of the endorsements. And it just seems to make sense that if the students, if they're going to identify the courses by January, that students would have already taken a lot of those courses, and if they qualify, give them the endorsement. How likely is it? Not sure.
Right.
For them to make that decision. But that's, that's certainly what we would advocate, because it would, students would have already met those standards, and why not give them that endorsement as soon as you can?
Because these are programmed to start the following year, and if they're going to move it up to graduate under the plan this year, then the endorsement should follow and graduate this year also.
Sure, sure.
It makes sense.
And is that...
Whether they do it or not.
Right.
We don't know.
Right. Is that competitive advantage hypothesized just for Texas colleges or any?
Any, it's hypothesized that it's for any, by having an endorsement, having a more clearly defined accomplishment, I think is the overarching concept there, that if you can identify an accomplishment and be more clearly defined for a college or university, then that should give you some edge.
Sure.
And that's the concept.
And I definitely see that for the endorsements. To me, the gray area is more in stating, I graduated on a foundation plan versus a recommended versus a distinguished. I really don't know if colleges even look at that, whether it's here or nationally.
Our colleges do, because if you're on the recommended plan rather than the minimum plan, you can go to a four-year school. But if you're on the minimum plan, you can only go to a two-year college.
Okay.
It's huge here.
Okay.
California's been doing endorsements for years now. They put a seal on the diploma.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's...
So, it could be significant.
And then, as far as the, the courses, that we're pleading to have a broad array of courses and to have this done, I agree with everybody to have it done before or by January so that we can have next year be successful and know what we're doing. Is it, let me, let me read this here. Is it going to be, or is there, I guess, going to be an opportunity to weigh in and, what am I trying to say here? Is there going to be an opportunity to help the State Board of Education with how they're going to determine these courses or approve these courses? Have they tipped their hand at all on what they're going to do? Is this going to be a, we have this course, and we're going to send it off to SBOE to get a stamp of approval? Are they going to have just a generic list, like, a generic list, a list like they do now for some of the other requirements?
And, and that's the point we're making with, especially point number one, is that don't over-regulate it, that it actually is a deterrent.
Right.
And, and actually hurts the courses we already offer. Like, in the fire academy, that was point one. But in terms of their identifying the courses, the, the only hint that we received, I think, and they just started kind of gelling on this idea, was that the, the whole notion of an advanced course, for, for them to change their thinking about advanced being the highest course that you can take in a particular subject versus an advancement towards a certification or an advancement towards an articulated agreement or dual credit and things like that. That was kind of the only slight gelling that started happening during the State Board that I could tell. The other that they asked me in particular was how, what's one way to identify advanced CTE courses? And, and I said, one way to identify that is to, you know, identify the ones that yield dual credit, like the ones we're doing with HVAC and welding and things like that. They're dual credit, or a path to an associate's degree. It's not the only way, way to identify, but that's one way. And, and so, those were the only two, I think, hints that I, I could sense. They're struggling a little bit or a lot with the advanced, the notion of advanced. But I think they're reframing how they define that. First, they started with it has to be the very highest level course. Now, I think they're looking at more of advancing through a vertical alignment.
So, what's their, what is their timeline or their timetable for making those determinations?
They have indicated that they will be finished by January.
Okay.
And I think there is a great deal of question.
Do we know if there's going to be other opportunity for public input when they come up with the rules of defining what the courses are, the approval of those courses?
Yeah. I think, at this point, we're not sure.
Okay.
If they're going to open up more public hearing, but the, the point, the point was made, not by me, but another speaker about, you know, get it done by January, they were quick to come back and saying that, that that's their timeline.
Okay.
Because the, it was a very short fuse on the public input for this hearing, and the Commissioner had to extend the timeframe involved just to allow us to get down there and speak to them. It was a real short fuse.
And I guess my final question then, if, if they warm up to and decide to utilize the dual credit criteria, will that meet all of our needs in the district? Or are we still maybe short for next year at least?
I think it'll meet some of our needs. It, it can't be the only way they identify advanced CTE courses, but it's, it's certainly a standard to start setting. And then, what leads to those dual credit courses then would be the next step. In other words, are you on a path of advanced?
Right.
And that's the other way they're reframing it, which I think started happening during that meeting. I don't think they came in with that notion, but they started discussing it that way.
Okay. Final question, is there any recommendation from the committee as far as action that we should take as a board or as individuals in contacting our local representative or the SBOE in general, or the Commissioner, to try to be a squeaky wheel or prompt, saying we may not have opportunity for formal testimony?
Right now, we've been following what we've seen from Hillco come in too, and they, we have not, I haven't seen any recommendations at, along those lines at this point, but surely if we do, we'll be reaching out from the committee.
Might be a question to ask them to see if that's, if they advise that or if it's going to be frivolous to do it. Just hate to just sit here and be at their mercy like we usually are. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, committee. And I would just say, during this time, as we monitor what the SBOE is doing and how things that were supposed to be laws supposedly are implemented, it's a great time to figure out what our next legislative agenda needs to be for 2015. So, it is, it is the focus. Unfortunately, we got to start working on it right now, because 2014 is the year to start building agendas for 2015. So, as you all monitor this, just keep little notes on your phones of things that could be items or things that get passed over, because they are great items to help us build a legislative agenda. Ms. Penya?
Well, we know that next week, we are all going to be attending training, and one of the things is they're going to have a Sunday brunch to discuss S-BAN.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
And as a Director of TASB, I get to go free. So, it would be great if we could get other board members to attend that as well, particularly the committee. There is a cost associated with it, but I think it'd be worth it. But like I said, mine is free and already paid for.
I was thinking that any of us that are members of S-BAN can go for free. I thought.
I can't remember.
It's $22. I think we can handle if someone is...
Okay.
I just know that...
I'm planning on going.
As a TASB, as a TASB Director, they put it on my agenda to attend.
Dr. Kavasos said he'd pay for it. No, I'm just kidding. It's worthwhile to, to take a focus on that. So, thank you so much, committee. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mr. Secretary, do we have any items?
Yeah, and I just put it away. It was Mr. Pampa's request for the drill-down data on the on-track graduation.
Eight through 12.
Yeah, nine through 12.
Okay.
That's it.
That's right, just high school.
Yeah.
Thank you. It is 10:01 PM. We will now move to closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 for consultation with general counsel, appointments, employment, evaluation, and discuss property or real estate. With that, we will not be coming back to open session. We are adjourned.